It's seven o'clock. Let's call the zoning commission meeting, regular meeting for April 19th to order. First order of business is the appointment of alternates and we have a full complement of commissioners. So no alternates are needed this evening. The first order of business here is we have two public hearings. One is a continuation of the zone change request. And the second is liquor application for present company. Where's Kevin? I lost you. There you are. You're in the middle. Okay. Do we need to read the call of application 2104 again to reconvene that? That public hearing?
No.
I don't think we need to do that.
Okay.
But where is the agenda?
The email.
Was in an email. It's Friday morning in the email, Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Dropbox.
Sorry, not the Dropbox. Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
He emailed it twice, I think.
I got it.
Got it.
Okay. We're in a public hearing for application 2104 of EAY Properties LLC. And I think the first thing I'd like to ask is the applicant, if they have anything to say to start this public hearing or continue this public hearing. To.
Hi. Phil Doyle. Dave, can you hear me?
Yes.
I had two public hearings going at one time. And the, I have been representing the applicant at, at this point. We don't have much more to add directly to the presentation. We haven't modified the application. I would just note that the town staff has sent along a a number of communications. There are some communications that we've been made aware of that are in opposition. And then a number of communications that have been sent to the, to the town that, that are in support. And I suppose perhaps where we left it at the end of last meeting. The commission has any questions of us and/or if there's any other public comment. Then I think we'd like to hear that, those questions and/or hear the comments and then summarize our position and then move on and, and see how the vote would turn out.
Okay, well, we, we will have to complete the public hearing and give everyone a chance to speak. And then we will close the public hearing and then no more comment will be admitted. And that later on in the meeting, we will discuss the application. If we close public hearings, we don't have to do that either. I think we have another probably another thirty, right, Mike?
You, you have time if you want to leave it open, but I mean, you know, maybe let's, let's take testimony first and see where we are at the testimony. You heard from the applicant that they prefer that if, if possible, you close the hearing tonight and take action. So I guess you have an open public hearing advised. Let's see what we get for tonight for testimony.
Okay. All right. Do the commissioners have questions first? Any of, any of alternates can ask questions too.
Dave, I wasn't at the former meeting, so I might be repeating something.
This might be the brewer. I don't know.
Go ahead, Dana.
Okay, um, so in reviewing the application, I'm wondering if the whole parcel has to be zoned the same thing, or whether the parcel can be subdivided. In other words, can we only zone a certain part of it? Like change the zone for a certain part of it. My concern being that it's a large parcel to be changing over. And, and it would allow future development. So that's, that's a question I have. It might have been raised already, but I just wanted.
No, it's not been raised. I I don't know the answer to that. Mike, do you have any comments? And then I think it would have to go to planning to make a subdivision.
So, so portions of the property which are located to the east of Hot Meadow Street are actually floodplain. So you could not create a new lot within the floodplain. So you're stuck.
Right. It's not that portion I'm concerned with. It's the portion that's north on Hot Meadow that still would allow for a, a, a great deal of development. I love the plan as it is. I think it would be very suitable, but if we're going to zone the whole parcel B1, there are, there's a large part of it that is not in the floodplain that according to the current plan would not be developed, but would be allowed to be developed if we change the whole parcel to be one.
That's correct. Any other questions or issues that, from the commissioners?
Dave?
Yeah.
It's Melissa Osborne, just speaking from, you know. Is it possible for them to have a use variance instead of a zone change? My concern is that, you know, that's a very historic district and a lot of the parcels around it are some of our last remaining historic parcels that that speak back to, you know, the Phelps and Dodge era, and there really isn't a lot of that left standing. And I'm concerned about the impact on, on what is left there.
Okay, I believe that ZBA would be the forum for variance.
That's correct.
We have, we have an application in front of us that we have to consider and decide. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Okay, I'll open it up to the public. We have several neighbors here who have spoken before and perhaps want to speak again. Raise your hand. I see Duncan is asking to speak. Go ahead, Duncan. And please state your name and address, please.
Sure thing. Duncan McKay, 327 Hot Meadow Street. We live in one of those historic homes directly across the street from the parcel in question. And, and I think Melissa Osborne raises a, an interesting question and two things I wanted to focus on with you tonight. The, the first is our plan of conservation and development. This is the, the guidebook for how we as a town want to develop our community. We spent a lot of time putting that document together. It was a collaborative effort of all of the townspeople who wanted to participate and the town. And importantly, in, in chapter 8.5 of, of this P O C D, it talks about Weetog Center and, and it calls Weetog Center a, a historic, unique place in Simsbury with a sense of place. And it recommends to the town that the town promote appropriate development in Weetog Center to establish pedestrian friendly place with a sense of place. And consider undertaking a special study of Weetog Center in order to evaluate the issues and opportunities in the area. Now, this is an important consideration because what you have here right now is a single zone change application that has skirted the entire Weetog Center study process. This is akin to spot zoning where a single application in the largest single residential parcel in Weetog Center, in historic Weetog Center, will determine the sense of place of Weetog Center going forward. Will it remain a historic hamlet? Will it retain its sense of place that in our home built in 1723? The old Pettybones Tavern built in, in 1780? Will it retain that, that continuity? You all by granting this application are turning that determination over to a developer. And not necessarily this developer, because once the zone is changed, as, as Mike Glidden mentioned in the last hearing, once that zone is changed, the owner of the parcel can do whatever he or she wants within the B1 zone. So it, this is an important consideration. And, and while you are sitting on this single application, I would ask you all as the zoning commission to consider this in the larger scheme of the plan of development for Simsbury, because right now we have a process that quite frankly has been irregular. By the time any of the abutters to this property became aware, were aware of this zone change application, it had already received planning commission recommendation for approval. It had already received a town planner's recommendation for approval. It had already been before you all as an informal hearing. So by the time we abutters knew about this, were made about, were made aware about this because we received no notice. This already had two recommendations for approval before it. And you got an opportunity to hear from, as did the planning commission, from the developer. Now, that was supposedly not a public hearing, yet according to the minutes of the planning commission meeting, which are not published, not posted. According to those minutes, the developer presented the application to the planning commission and answered questions at the planning commission. And interestingly, at the planning commission, the representations were made and the planning commission certainly understood that this development, this brewery and tasting room were going to be located within the boundaries of the barn. Well, we now know from our April 5th hearing, from your April 5th hearing, that that isn't in fact the case. That the barn will not contain the brewery and taste, not big enough. It's 1344 square feet. That is not sufficient to house the operation unless the brewer is intending to dramatically reduce the current size of its facility in East Hartford, which is a lot larger than 1344 square feet. Importantly to note here is, as you all, you all identified, this property is located largely in, in a floodplain zone. Indeed, the FEMA map, the most recent FEMA map on the GIS mapping system that the town uses for this property has the entire barn within the FEMA map zone. So where can any development that will be necessary for this application, where will that development need to take place? It's very simple. You need only look at the map to see that the only place that this property can be developed is up to that 25 foot setback from Hot Meadow Street and between the barn and the White House. If the White House stays, because again, once the zone changes, there's no obligation for the owner to maintain the White House. They can convert the White House into retail, into a convenience store, whatever a site plan might offer it. So we submit to you that this is far from keeping with the sense of place of Weetog Center. And again, the plan of conservation and development calls for you all as a zoning commission following this town center study of Weetog Center, this town study of Weetog Center. It calls on you as the zoning commission to then consider that input and determine whether or not there is a more appropriate zone, even a village zone that you all, as your legislative function, could then impose on this area. And, and I would, I would suggest that to the extent that you grant this application and treat this single application as the one event that will determine the future fate of and sense of place of this hamlet. We are abdicating that responsibility. And, and, and my wife and I, we've been here for 30 years. We want to stay here. We've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into our property. We've invested in the fountain that sits around our property or our property sits, submits, centers around that. And, and it is our intent to, to challenge these procedural irregularities. If, if not here, and if, if this zoning commission decides to ignore those and to move forward, even tonight's meeting was posted and doesn't mention this application. In the legal notice of this meeting, there is no mention of this particular zone change application. There's one other application mentioned, and we received a number of calls from folks, some of whom hopefully have made it here, but weren't aware that this was the right public meeting. As we heard from Mr. Doyle, he's got two public meetings going on. We want folks to be at this public meeting, but they didn't know because the notice doesn't identify this application is pending. You all can correct that. You all can correct the procedural irregularities. You all can make sure that the town looks at Weetog Center and, and the sense of place that the town plan of conservation and development says is so important to this community as our gateway area to the town, you all have an opportunity to say, whoop, timeout. You do have time. With the executive orders from the governor, you do have more time. And indeed, the town should take the time. You should deny this application, even without prejudice. Deny this application and let the town study Weetog Center. Let the residents who live here and who have planted our roots here, not, not the homeowner who doesn't live in that property, who is trying to sell that property and is trying to get the most that he can, that's fine. Get the most that he can from the sale of that property and is using the commercial zone change as a vehicle to do that. He's not going to be here when this is over.
We have several people who want to speak and I, I appreciate your full.
I, I thank, I thank you for indulging me and, and appreciate the opportunity to talk to you again. I do have, we have a couple of letters in that hopefully you've had a chance to read and I will, I will let others fill in. And if there's an opportunity to, to respond, you know, I'm certainly happy to take, take you up on that.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Does someone else wish to speak? Andy Glassman?
Thank you. Commissioner, commissioners. My name's Andy Glassman. People don't know me, so I'm introducing myself as required. I live at 4D Pinnacle Mountain Road. I've been a resident of Simsbury for 33 years. And I'm, I'm here on behalf of Helmar Abigail's and the Wolf Restaurant Group, the, obviously the next door butter owning, operating and, and running Abigail's. Duncan has said a lot of things that obviously I concur with. I'm here obviously to speak in objection to the application on behalf of Helmar. But there are really two things I want to focus on. The, the first thing I want to focus on is the fact that, as we all know, this tavern has been a tavern since 1780. Duncan mentioned that. I just want to repeat that. I want to underscore that. And I want to underscore that because it simply means that the use that exists today is the use that pre-existed zoning. And frankly, it's likely that the only reason we're even having this conversation is because when zoning came along and the town decided to establish uniform zoning, this exists, existed as a tavern and therefore fit into it the classification and definition of the B1 zone. If it were a home like all the other homes, we'd be talking about an exclusively residential neighborhood. Now, the neighborhood, the, the Weetog Village is in your plan of development is designated as a residential and farm community, not just residential, importantly, a farm community. And this parcel in question represents a significant portion of that farming activity within the village. That's an important component of this. If you look at your plan of development, it identifies, as Duncan had said, that this is an extremely unique zone because of its historical nature and because of the unique aspects of it, the farmland, the access to the river. And it calls for a special study of this area. And so when I go back and I look at the plan and I look at the recommendation of the planning commission, I scratch my head and try to understand how the planning commission could have made a favorable recommendation and suggested that this is even consistent with its own plan. It specifically says that the town needs to take a moment and think about what would be appropriate and applicable as the proper zone, zoning components in this, in this area. So going back to the B1 designation, which exists again only because of the prior existing use. What you're attempting to do here, I'm sorry, with the applicant is requesting that you do is to take that designation, which was not an active choice made by the zoning commission or the town of Simsbury, but a recognition of what existed and extend this prior existing use to provide the prior existing use as a rationale for making a legislative decision to now extend the zone, which will obliterate the residential components on the east side of, of, of Hot Meadow. I'm sure that the other abutter would like nothing more than this to be designated as a B1 zone. And in their eyes, it probably would enhance their, in their minds, the value of the property just north of this particular parcel. And who knows if that's going to be the next application filed for extension of the B1 known based on this exact rationale that's being provided in this application. The rest of the residents in this neighborhood see it as a diminishment of value, a diminishment of their value and not the highest and best use of this piece of property in the context of the requirement that you balance the other interests of the other residents of this neighborhood. So to make a legislative decision based on an extension of a prior existing use would be an error. It would be in excess of legislative process. It would be inappropriate and it would be extremely damaging to the, to this Weetog Village community. I want to speak a little bit about the concerns specifically that Helmar has. As we all know, because most of us are patrons of Abigail's, the parking has been an extreme problem. The ingress and egress on and off of Abigail's property has been a problem. That was the only reason that the, the adjustment to the existing land was made to begin with, because he didn't have enough parking. It was unsafe. And I presume that what's going to happen here and is very likely to happen is if you grant this, this zone change and if you allow the, the the brewery to be there, people are going to attempt to access the back end of Helmar's property, compound the traffic problem, traffic problems, compound the parking problems, and it's going to be utter chaos on the corner of Hartford Road and Hot Meadow. And Helmar has asked me to express to you that he has had frustration with other activities he's had on other businesses where he was left with this kind of parking disorganization. And it's compelled him to go out and hire security service at a great expense. It, it causes patrons to feel harassed. And it's so it, it diminishes his ability to operate his business as appropriate. So given the, the capacity issues that he currently has, I hope the zoning commission is not anticipating that any overflow parking issues are going to be resolved by access to Abigail's parcel, because it simply won't happen. So, so that's, I think I'd like to take that into consideration.
Andy, can you wrap it up, please?
Yeah. And lastly, what I want to do is I want to identify some of the same concerns I have on the notice and the procedure and the the process followed. COVID should never be an excuse for due process and transparency. And unfortunately, it seems to have happened here in this, in this case. I know that the zoning commission has urged the applicant to speak with the residents. My understanding is the first conversation that took place was a couple hours ago, a few hours ago today, and it wasn't much of a conversation. That's not what Simsbury has been. That's not what I've been active in town for, for 33 years to try to have, be the process that we follow in our commission hearings and, and processes. So I, I would also agree that we need to take the time to do this right, to air all concerns and to hear from all parties. And maybe there's the possibility of a plan that's better, more suited for this parcel. And it is also my understanding that there is residential interest in this parcel. This is not an applicant who has a distressed piece of property. This is a well-functioning piece of property valuable in the market that individuals have expressed an interest in owning and living in as residents. And so I have additional material that I submitted in written form that I know was made as part of the record. So I, Mr. Glidden has indicated that will be part of the record for anybody who wants to review my additional comments in more detail.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Someone else like to speak? Another member of the public?
I'd like to speak, Dave.
Who is this?
Chris McCarty.
Okay, Chris.
I, Chris McCarty, Jennifer McCarty, my wife. We live at 327 Hot Meadow. We share the property with the Maccas. And I, I couldn't, I couldn't help but be compelled by some of the comments that Andy had made relative to the agricultural nature of the area and what that has been for, for so, for so long now. My wife and I own the property just to the north of our place on the west side of Hot Meadow Street, just, just above us. That property lay fallow for a long time. And it was part of the property adjacent to the, or including the memorial statue, the soldier memorial statue. And it was separated. And when it came in the, on the market recently, had the opportunity to purchase it, my primary thought on purchasing it was to maintain the sense of place that we have there rather than have it be available for some other type of development. As it turns out, I maintain a very small personal orchard here in the backyard, probably 13 trees or so. And I also maintain bees. And my thought and idea on maintaining the sense of place and the continuity of the, of the agricultural nature of the area was to move that orchard, expand it a little bit and put my bees out there as well. Moving the zoning change to a, to a business plan is not in keeping with, with what we have had here for so long or what I had planned to, to put into that place and which piece of property that I've spent quite a lot of money to, to purchase to maintain all of that. And I hope that is also taken into consideration as you go forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Would someone else like to speak?
I'll speak briefly. I, I concur strongly with the three statements. Sorry, my name is.
Can you state your name and your address, please?
My name is Baird Faithfull. I live at 315 Hot Meadow. And I concur strongly with the statements made by Duncan and Andy and Chris.
Do you mind, do you guys mind pausing?
Excuse me? Bear, go ahead.
All right, am I pausing?
I can hear you.
Okay, I, I heard someone asked to be, to pause. I'm sorry. I, we, my family moved to this house about a year ago exactly because of the historic nature of the village. We fell in love with this particular area and this particular piece of Simsbury because of its historical nature. And the, the, just two things I would add, and I'll make it very brief to what has already been said, is that the traffic situation coming onto Hot Meadow at that intersection of Hot Meadow and 185 is already very difficult. Getting out of our driveway early in the morning and at four o'clock, five o'clock in, in the afternoon is bad. And adding more traffic to that intersection is, is, is not a, not a good idea. And second, as, as someone who cares deeply about the Farmington River, I'm really worried about, I, I've heard very little discussion of the building on the floodplain, adding driveways on the floodplain, putting impervious surfaces on the floodplain, which would, you know, leach oil and chemicals into the Farmington. I, I've heard no discussion of that. And just the very final point, you know, one of the reasons we moved to a small town was the hope for you know, small town politics and small town democracy. And I've been really disappointed with this zoning commission in terms of transparency, in terms of just straightforwardness, willingness to return phone calls, willingness to put agendas and items on the town website clearly. And I don't really understand why in a small town where we, we bump into each other on sidewalks that there's so little transparency in this process.
Thank you. Someone else like to speak?
Hi, I would like to speak.
Okay, Amy Petrus?
Yes, I'm sorry for the outburst before I was trying to get my, somebody to mute at my home. So I'm a, I'm Amy Petrus. Somebody to mute at my home. So I'm a I'm Amy Petrus. I'm from the Farmington River Watershed Association. And I want to speak about.
So what's your address, Amy?
I don't have an address in Simsbury. I'm representing the Farmington River Watershed Association, which is on seven forty nine Hot Meadow Street.
Okay, but what what is your address?
I live on one seventy one South Highland Street in West Hartford.
Thank you. That's fine.
Okay, thanks. So I just wanted to, for the record, for the zoning portion of this. Parcel just mentioned that there's a reason that this property was zone residential, this area of Simsbury historically floods. And most of this parcel is in the floodplain. And I would like the zoning. Commission to consider that it's becoming the accepted practice in climate change resiliency to use the five hundred year floodplain boundary. As a precautionary practice for resiliency planning. Climate models predict increased annual precipitation and frequency of heavy downpours increasing flood risks. Precipitation from extremely heavy storms has increased seventy percent since nineteen fifty eight. During the next century, average annual precipitation and the frequency of heavy downpours is likely to keep rising. Healthy, undisturbed floodplains are extremely important as they provide floodwater storage, reduce flood velocity and peak flow. Reduce erosion and sedimentation and provide climate change resiliency. Floodplains benefit. Water quality by filtering nutrients and impurities from runoff. Processing organic waste and moderating stream temperatures. Additionally, floodplains help maintain healthy ecosystems. And fish and wildlife habitat. This seven acre parcel is mostly undeveloped, only along Hot Meadow Street. And I would really consider that you not change the zone for this parcel. I also just want to add, since we now know that I'm a West Hartford resident and as a commuter to Simsbury. I frequently have trouble in that intersection with people driving and trying to navigate into the Abigail's parking lot. From both. The one eighty five intersection and Hot Meadow Street, and it is a very dangerous intersection. Adding more traffic is going to be an issue for your commuters. And there's a number of them that come into Simsbury, including myself. I would consider that we recommend that you you determine a zone, like a floating zone for this area. The developer, Phil Doyle, has proposed a floating zone. An application for a floating zone in Farmington. He is very adept at navigating something like that. He's familiar with it. This wouldn't be a problem for him. And it would also be a way for the. The town to get. Familiar with what they really want in Weetog Center. Thank you for, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Care to speak?
Hi. My name is Kate Tortland, and this is my husband, Danielle.
Hi, everyone.
We live at three three two Hot Meadow. And I just want to say, you know. We we haven't really been participating in anything. We haven't really been aware. Of these zoning meetings or anything. I actually saw a post about this on a Simsbury Facebook. Neighbors page last week. And I just, I just want to. Say that I love this town. I love this area. My grandfather was a high school teacher in Simsbury. My mother grew up here. I grew up here. We've lived here for the past seven years and we just love it and we've been so grateful. To live here and enjoy this space. And we're taking a neutral. A neutral perspective. We weren't necessarily anticipating all of this. Going on. So it's a little bit shocking to see that in Simsbury neighbors page just scrolling through one day. But I guess all I want to say is that whatever the board decides is, we just want to be good stewards of. Where we are and what we have and. Yeah, I think that's it.
Haven't even started with me yet.
I'm sorry?
Sorry.
I think I'm next.
Are you are you for the application or against?
We're taking a neutral position. I we. I just wanted to to make that comment.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any anyone else like to speak to this application? Bruce, do you have a question? You have a look?
I know. I was just going to ask the, just to make sure that you. Invite anyone who's already spoken that might want to add to their earlier remarks.
Yes, we would.
Before we.
Do that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So if anyone would like to speak again. Duncan or Andy or. Jennifer or Bear?
Yes, sure. This is, sorry. Jennifer McCarty. I just want to add to what my husband, Chris and Duncan. And others have said regarding, you know, where we are. We also have been here for. Almost thirty years and put a lot of time and effort and into into the property and really felt. That especially with the lot next door by buying that and. Doing all the work that we are relative to the orchards. We've got flower gardens. It was really kind of our vision. My husband and I retired and it was our hope and it's our vision to really enhance. The neighborhood in terms of the work that we want to do over there and we travel a lot. We've seen beautiful gardens around the country and around the world and we've been very inspired and. Have been doing that in in the lot that we currently have, but really have some great ideas and thoughts about doing that next door as well. In addition to the. To the fruit trees and the honeybees. We've got some beautiful thoughts in mind in terms of flowers and. Other kinds of trees that would really further enhance the neighborhood. So we really hope that the zoning change does not go through for all the reasons that have been described earlier. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Duncan?
Or just, I I would echo what what Jennifer and Chris said. They have a beautiful garden and I know that their orchard will be beautiful if they are given the opportunity to. To plant it, then we certainly hope that they will be. I I do want to disclose with with this with this reminder that. This is not just about the brewery. This is about the zone change and it is about the sense of place. That is what is important here. And and again, that's not a decision that should be left to an individual to make. That's a decision that that was. Determined by the town and the plan of conservation and development to be made by the community and indeed by you all. In a in a special zone consideration for the entire area. Don't forego that opportunity. Don't foreclose that opportunity for us to participate in our future here. Don't foreclose and frustrate the purpose of the plan of conservation and development. By by giving away that decision by granting this zone change because once it's made, it it can't go back. And indeed, as suggested by Andy, this will just be the first domino to fall. And before you know it, we'll have a shopping center application across the street. I don't think that's what the town plans for Weetog Center. Indeed, the plan of conservation and development has a rendering of what the town's view of Weetog Center was. And it has a park-like setting where the bike path begins. It has the the Civil War monument moved to that park-like setting where there's pedestrian access. If we allow this commercial development to happen, that will never happen. That that rendering is just a rendering. So please. Consider this, this is not just a single application. This is the future of the sense of place of Weetog. And Weetog Center, and we really ask you to to keep that in mind and and deny this application. And give the town a chance to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy?
Just very quickly. Just to reiterate. This is an all or nothing proposition and 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 I'm glad that I heard some of the commissioners. Expressing their awareness of that. You can't have do this zone. You can't sort of allow a barn brewery and then allow everything else to be the same. This is in your hands and it's it's. Permanent. It's indelible, intractable. It becomes what. The area will be going into the future and you're taking the rep, you're going to determine that risk. Associated with the homeowners in this neighborhood. The last point is. The best the best. Use of a property, the the highest and best use does not mean. The best price that a person selling a property. Can obtain for the sale of that property. The highest and best use is the use appropriate in the zone. That benefits the area, the neighborhood, and returns to the owner. The right to use that property to maintain the health of that property. Not necessarily to get every single dollar out of that property if they're looking to sell. So please include that in your consideration. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're reaching the point to close the public hearing.
Dave, Phil Doyle.
Yes.
The are 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 we allowed to make any responses?
We're in a public hearing. You can make statements. Go ahead.
I did have one comment, please. It'll take me thirty seconds. I just wanted to add Kate and Danielle being very diplomatic. And and I would just, I think I, I'm not speaking for them, but I just wanted you all to know they've lived in the house, the White House. It's on the parcel that you're considering. They have loved and take and taken care of and nurtured it. They are trying to be very diplomatic and darling by taking a neutral position, but they love their home and don't want to see anything happen to it. So I am just clarifying that and I echo all the comments made tonight and let you know that we will. Pursue every legal and public relations avenue available to protect our property in this Weetog Village.
Thank you, Julie. Phil?
Yeah.
Wanted to say something?
Yeah, I I'd like to say a few things. It's, you know, I have made the application for. The owner. And the it it's customary, since it's my application, to be able to to respond and to put in. Some perspective. Some of the points that have been made by by people who are uncomfortable with this application. And. Perhaps to touch on a couple of of points that have been made by commission members. And one of the commission members, for example. Asked about partial rezoning of the property. That's that's not what we've asked for. And they they might be under a slight misrepresentation of. The 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 floodplain as it relates to the to the. But there there is not a a huge amount of this property. On the northern side up towards the Mike Yakamore property line or in in that area. That that extends very deep off. Hot Meadow Street. That is above the floodplain. The floodplain is was one sixty. The recent maps that have just. Relatively recently come out from FEMA. Show the floodplain at about one fifty nine. And and that's basically at the at the toe of the slope that drops down from Hot Meadow Street. It was, and I might have been Mr. Glassman, or it might have been Mr. McKay. I'm I'm not really sure.
You can leave a comment in the chat if not.
Someone had indicated that the. Barn is is.
That's to everyone. So if you start typing there. Let me turn that on.
Excuse me, please, please mute yourself one. Mr. Doyle, speak. Go ahead.
Okay, you muted so I can speak. The the. The floodplain runs to the toe of the slope and the the barn is is not within the floodplain. The floodplain runs immediately. Below the barn. So the the. It is a misrepresentation to suggest that that the floodplain.
Excuse me, people, excuse me, but people, people can make comments. They don't have to be right or wrong. We rely on staff to give us the correct. Interpretation of the floodplain and and we will. And your point is that. Staff has that and you believe. That it shows that the barn is out of the floodplain. We accept that. Staff has told us that.
And Dave, I think just to your point, the there are a number of issues that have risen tonight that. Would be if this property were rezoned, really are are site plan issues that could be approved or 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 turned down by by the commission. So I don't want to get into all of that. All I would would say is in terms of. Issues like notifications. As we made this application, we went to town staff and I think town staff has indicated to you that that the notification meet all of the requirements. That are currently in place, given the. Emergency declaration by the governor. We've submitted with the application, the list of of property owners within a hundred feet. But we were told that that is not the process that the town of Simsbury is following at this point and. My understanding would be that that's true for every application, not just. Singling out this particular application. So I believe we follow procedurally all of the correct. Process. The. I would say that over time. The this area has changed. I I think we're, you know, it's. Nice to think. That that the Abigail's is the same restaurant that existed when Petty Bones might have first. Started under a different name in the seventeen hundreds, but it's not. It's expanded. Your commission has granted a number of approvals for expansion, including part of the building in the in the in the floodplain. As well as the outside terrace, the rezoning of a portion of the property B one. So it's not. There have been decisions made by the commission over time, contrary to what Mr. Glassman had indicated. Commission could have made a decision years ago to leave the Abigail's property as when Bob August owned it. As a pre-existing non-conforming use, but they didn't. They designed it as a, they designated as B one. You've defined what is in the B one zone and we all know that that's a.
Please, please comment on on your application and why we should accept it, not. Get off into a debate with the public.
The 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 point, though, Dave, is on this, that the area is in the process of of changing. We believe our application is consistent with that. And and you're you're aware of the various letters of support. We have letters of support from the all of the abutting northerly. Property owners. We believe this is a good application. And it is consistent, I think, with with where the the town should be going in. In this particular area. So with that, I'll sign off.
Thank you very much. Andy?
I just want to make one point that the northerly abutting owners are all affiliates of the applicant. And have and benefit from this type of a zone change, as I had suggested earlier. So it's, you know, it it it's sort of. It it underscores my earlier. Point, which is this is the beginning of a process. That is being welcomed by the northerly northerly abutting owners. That's why they're they're supportive of the process. It gives them flexibility with respect to their other parcels of property.
Okay, that's fine.
I just want to add one thing and we've kind of been staying away from it and then I promise I won't say anything. Someone else has just raised it with me is. We're skirting around the issue of commercial and we we really haven't focused on the whole concept of a of the brewery being giving us being keeping. I just want to alert everybody to how breweries really work. It's not going to be a quaint little tasting facility. We're going to have food trucks. And people outside. And people encroaching upon the Abigail's Tavern parking and traffic. And in Andy's words, it will be chaos. So that is not in keeping with our current community.
Thank you, Julie. Okay. I think we're reaching the point. Can I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
And we have a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Ann. Motion made by Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, we have a six nothing decision to. Okay, we have a six-nothing decision to close the public hearing. Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman, can you read the call for our second public hearing?
Yes, my, yeah. Application number 21-05 of GHSP LLC owner Jeff Lozati, applicant. Special exception pursuant to section 5.5 and 6.3 of the zoning regulations to expand outdoor patio with alcohol service of the property located at Two Tunkses Road, AO4-206-001 Zone I1FT.
Thank you. Is there someone here to, I see Jeff Lozati.
That's me.
Yes. Are you going to just tell us what you intend there?
Thank you, David. Thank you, committee. My name's Jeffrey Lozati. I'm the owner of Present Company Restaurant, which is located at Two Tunkses Road in wonderful Terrifil. GSHP LLC, in case there's any clarity for Inc., is the property owner's business. Steven Stang is also, has been a Simsbury resident, lives in Canton, I believe now, but has owned the property since 2000. And I have owned and operated that restaurant since 2016. Will be coming up on five years this July. I purchased the property, or I purchased the business and have been renting and leasing that space from Steven since 2016. Originally, the idea when we took over the restaurant from the previous owners, the Mill at 2T, was to eventually expand within that facility interior. That never came to fruition. And based upon the constraints and maneuverability that has taken place with operating restaurants, outdoor dining has become crucial to the success of any operation. Previous to this proposed expansion, I have had zero outdoor dining space. So this would be a brand-new dynamic and one that would certainly benefit the property community and the 15-eyed people work for me and work with me at Present Company. What we're looking at doing is constructing a raised deck on the north side of the restaurant. And that would be covered with a three-season tent that would have 40 more seats outside on the deck with a full-service bar. Currently, I have a beer and wine permit. What I'm looking to do is extend that permit for outside as well as full-service liquor permit.
Is that not a change in permit?
That is a change in permit. And I did notice that in the notes for this hearing, I think that Mike provided that it said otherwise. So what we are doing is we're doing two things at once. We're looking at putting a bar into my establishment that happens to be outside on the deck, which would change from our beer and wine permit that we currently have to a full-service liquor permit.
Okay, do we have the paperwork for that, Mike?
No, I do not. That's why I was under the assumption it was just straight patio. So we need a copy of that license. This is actually required in our regs.
You need a copy of my current license?
No, what you're going to apply for with the state.
He can't get the license until we approve the special exception.
Yeah. But it's more importantly, so it's a copy of your application that you're going to submit so that it says, okay, we're going for full liquor. Then it's, their approval will be based on that, full liquor with a patio.
So, so is my understanding, and I apologize for the discrepancy if that was on my side, but that I had pursued that with the Department of Consumer Protection. That has already been taken place, that they've received my application for this extension. So I apologize if that wasn't delivered to you or if that's not something that was already prepared prior to our hearing.
We need to know what the actual license class is. What does the state say it is? A class XXX? I don't know.
Okay.
Can you tell us that?
I can't tell you that right now in front of me. I don't have what that, I mean, what we're talking about is I have a beer and wine license and it just needs to be extended to a full liquor license. I don't have the exact name of what that license is from the state. I guess I'm a little just confused because I thought these were sort of things that were already connected. So I apologize if that's
Sorry, our regulations say that to approve a liquor permit for a property, we have to be told exactly what state permit is being applied for.
Okay. It sounds like it's easy enough for me to deliver that to the responsible, you know, to the people that need to see that. My, I guess my concern that I have now at this point is from my scheduling standpoint, I was hoping to have my construction of the deck and tents and bar within the next month or so to be prepared for the season, which desperately a restaurant and a small restaurant like myself is counting on. So, and I know that would this require a whole nother hearing to take place if that's the case?
What does our call say? No, I think we just, it says alcohol service on the outside. It doesn't specify beer and wine. And I think what you have to do is to get to Mike, the liquor permit
From the state.
That you're applying for.
I don't think that'd be very tough to do. That's no problem. Yeah.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Andy, you may speak if you want.
Yeah, I'm not here for this purpose, but I happen to know about liquor licenses. So what he would have to apply for and bring to you is a full liquor license with either an accessory use application or a patio application, which is just an addendum to either of those initial
Which, which, yes, I'm sorry, Andy, which the patio is what I believed I delivered. So that's why I'm confused as to why we have this discrepancy.
Are you changing it to a full liquor?
It's not an additional license. It's just an accessory, it's just a one-page addendum to the actual application. And so it's the same liquor license application with that extended use permission. And I'll be quiet now.
Thank you. Anyway, I think we're we don't say in our, in our public notice what alcohol permission is being applied for, so. Okay. I think we, we know what you want. Do the commissioners have more questions? I'm sorry I've interfered with the presentation.
I'll speak. So we could approve the patio and the outdoor alcohol service. And he could build his bar with the intent that it's going to be wine. But, you know, if we need to approve something at a second meeting, that wouldn't hold up any of his construction then.
True.
Right? So if it's okay with you, Jeff, you know, you would just come back with the change in the status of your liquor license. But we could approve the, everything else tonight. It just wouldn't be for the full liquor license. I did have a question though. Is there access? How do you access this from indoors? Are your servers going to come out through the front door?
Right. If I may, great question. So what we're actually doing is three things at once. We're constructing a raised deck that will join the restaurant so that it's flush with the floorboard currently in the interior of the dining room. And one of the windows closest to my, if anyone is familiar with the space, is an open kitchen. And we have a chef's counter that seats six people that overlooks into the open kitchen. The window that is closest to the chef's counter will be converted into a door, which will be my second point of ingress and egress for accessing the deck from inside. Then from the exterior standpoint, the deck is designed to have two, since it will be about almost just under two feet tall, two steps on the north side of the parking lot and one where currently the handicap access ramp is.
Okay, if you're looking at the building from the side, from the north side, is that window the third window, the fourth window?
Exactly.
Or from the front? Okay.
Yeah.
Right, because the footings are already in place for this deck.
Correct. We've already started to dig.
Okay.
Okay, questions? Any more questions?
So do we know what this deck looks like or what the tent looks like? Is there a railing around the deck or?
Yep. If I may, the deck has been designed to be a pressure-treated wooden deck with steel cable railings. Like I mentioned, with two access points with two steps on the north side and the, I guess that would be the west side of the deck. You could enter the deck through three points essentially, two from the outside and one if you're in the interior of the restaurant. The tent is called a Navitrac tent. It's a modular frame tent. In layman's terms, it's an outdoor event space tent that you would typically see abutting a a more urban setting restaurant. It's very well-designed and easy to modify, expand, augment, and it is designed for a three-season durability and is being sourced with a company based in Stanford that primarily does most of their business in Manhattan. My emphasis was to have a very nice-looking tent. The visibility and the optics of my restaurant are highly visible from 189 and, but it's already a beautiful space. It's very important to me, as well as Steven, the landowner, to create an expanded space that is congruent with the current look and feel and design of the building. So it's, it is, it is by all means going to look very nice. And it's essentially 35 by 30 feet, the dimension. The tent is going to cover the majority of that space. There'll be an outlying perimeter area that's not covered by the tent. The tent joins, it's a gable tent that joins the side of the restaurant. So it's seamless with a bit of a gutter system in between the actual wall of the restaurant and the tent. So that will have free access throughout the year and the ability to maintain comfortable dining space in the event of inclement weather.
Good. Okay, any more questions?
Just something further on that tent. I'm curious, you're describing it as a three-season tent. Does that mean three seasons for use by patrons or after three seasons it's taken down and then put back up in the spring?
That's correct.
Which part? It's taken down and then put back up after the winter?
It's taken down in November, December, back up in April.
And what's the highest point of the deck versus the ground? Is it, are you talking about the thing is two feet off the ground, the surface of the deck versus the ground below? Or is it four feet or what's the height?
Two feet.
Oh, okay. Good. Yeah, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, one last thing though. Has the building official seen the plans for the deck? I mean, I'm just, I want to make sure that you're on the right track with building something that he's going to approve.
It's previously approved.
Okay, thank you.
Another drawings we have, talk about the railing. I mean, it's to keep someone from falling off. I see your dimensions on the deck, but not
Yeah, I think what you have, Kevin, doesn't include the railings because we weren't we weren't decided on which type of railing we wanted to do, whether it was going to be a wooden or steel cable railing. Looking at it from a commercial standpoint, the steel wire, nine steel wire railing system, I think is the no-brainer answer for us in terms of durability, safety, as well as design and appearance.
And the height of it? The height of the railing?
It's going to be up to code. I don't know what that's supposed to be, but what is it, four, four feet?
Building, building department controls that, right?
Yeah, I don't have that answer.
Henry will have the answer for it.
I'm the chef, not the contractor.
I think it's three and a half, but
Yeah.
It's 42.
It can't be built, you know, the building official wouldn't allow it, so.
Right. Henry Mia from building has inspected the space and has been working very well with my current contractor and
But you're in, you're in good hands with Henry.
Yeah, I know.
Any other questions from the commission?
Is there a ramp to the, to the deck?
From ADA standpoint, the ramp that you enter my restaurant in is what you would be able to use to enter the deck.
Okay, because I don't see that in the drawings either, but okay.
Ann, questions?
No.
Mike? Anybody in the public want to speak?
I guess I'll speak even though I'm technically not public, but I am. I do live in Terrifil and I would love any kind of improvement. So I think that sounds like a really great, great thing. I'm fully supporting it.
I'd like to speak as a fellow.
Good news, so I'm happy.
Excuse me. Thanks, Diane. Chris Riley, who wanted to speak?
Yeah, as a fellow restaurateur in town, you know, and that space in Terrifil is gorgeous by the river. And what Jeff is trying to do is, would be a total asset to the dining community and amenity to the town. So, you know, Godspeed.
Thank you very much. Any more questions of the commission or the public? And a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we close the public hearing on application 2105.
By Mike Doyle. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? It carries six-nothing. Thank you very much. Okay. Next order of business is the application 2164 for the zone change. Staff has made a recommendation and a proposed draft, I believe, of a motion, but
I believe you just made 2104, maybe?
2104.
Yeah, 264.
I'm sorry. My glasses aren't very good. My eyes aren't very good.
Dave, your memory's slipping too.
You got that. That's correct. Okay. Anybody have any comments on this, on this application?
Dave, just one thing. You have a motion from me, but it was prepared for the, prior to the last meeting. So the effective date, if you were to make a motion in the affirmative for that, would have to be changed. And let me just give the date right now. I'll pull up the calendar. I'm sorry to interrupt quick. I would say three, three weeks from, set it for, so get it outside of the appeal, appeal period, assuming the Hartford current runs are noticed by Friday. It would be three weeks from this coming Friday, so I would say an effective date for this approval would be May fourteenth.
Okay. We will note that. Okay. Comments on, on the application? Anne?
No.
Mike?
Sorry, I was muted and trying to unmute. Duncan mentioned the potential or possibility of some irregularities in our, in our processes and I'm concerned with that. I mean, I, I didn't have time to go and look to see if, you know, we had everything posted the way we were supposed to and, you know, I want to make sure that we follow the rules for sure and I'd like to hear.
Mike?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm asking Mike to answer.
Yeah, so one of the comments made is that a, a, a public notice, a legal notice of action was not published prior to today's meeting, which is not required for a continued public hearing. Other comment of the technical error was the issue with the legal notice of action by, by the zoning, by the planning commission's action. That is not required by statute either. Legal notices are only required when, when either, either commission takes a regulatory action. The, the planning commission's review, as, as this commission knows, is an advisory review of the proposed change as it relates to the plan of conservation development. So it was not, that was not a legal action that constituted a requirement of legal notices as per state statute. And the last one is the notifications. I know they made comments about notifications. Under your regulations, you do not require no notices, either certified mail or otherwise, mailed to, to abutting property owners. Maybe that's something a subject that we could discuss later this evening. But it's, that's really, it's, it's not a technical issue as it relates to your regulations.
Can I answer your question, Mike?
It did, thank you.
Donna, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't have any questions. My only comment would be reading Mike's report. The list of possible uses for the property under the B1 zone other than just the the proposed one currently is extensive and I would urge everybody to take a look at that.
Okay. Who has this book and Bruce?
I think that, I mean, I've been in Simsbury a long time. We moved here in nineteen forty-eight. In the mid-sixties, when I was finishing high school, I worked at the gas station in Mitchell Pontiac. The road at Mitchell Volvo and whatever, the road was different back then. When, when I stand kind of behind where the post office is, I look to the south, it basically is very much the same as it was forty, fifty years ago. And I, pardon me? And so my point is that this issue of a sense of place and the character and the need to protect it, I think is very important. And I think that a conversion to a B1 zone jeopardizes that sense of place. Now, I'm, I guess I feel like that potential for compromising the sense of place is a very big factor in my thinking, but I've also been driving through there longer than anybody else here and that traffic is, is just, you know, it's worth your life sometimes to get, you know, on one eighty-five in either direction or through there on Route ten, it's absurd. And I'm not saying that the State Traffic Commission hasn't done their very best, but it's horrendous. And I think that adding any kind of attraction in that area, that's going to increase the volume of people trying to get on and off Route ten or on and off one eighty-five. That's, that's trouble and I'm, I'm concerned that we have a responsibility to act in the best interest of the citizens of Simsbury and one of them is not to make the traffic hazard worse where we all know it's, it's problematic to begin with or at this stage. The other thing that I want to comment on is I think that there's a very compelling argument not to go forward with this on the basis of the potential jeopardy it places in terms of the value of the properties in the immediate area. I think we had somebody, I know we did at our last meeting who identified herself as a licensed appraiser. She's in the record because she, she was part of the meeting and, and gave her vocal voice testimony, but I think that there's just, there are no doubt in my mind that those homes that are in the immediate area are going to suffer from this change if it's granted. And while others have pointed it out, you know, you can, but you know, in your minds, I think of gee, a brewery and a, you know, sample room or whatever might be a nice little thing there. That's only one of many, many, many things that could occur as a business venture in that area in the future. And I don't think that we, we need to take that risk at this time. So I'm, I'm opposed to, I mean, really, we're not taking a vote right now, but I'm opposed to going forward with this.
Well, I'm just getting people's feelings on this. And Kevin, what you think?
I'm a big historian. But the question about the plan of development, I mean, the interpretation there, I mean, they wrote it. So I think the official interpreters of the plan of development is the planning commission and they have given their approval for this. And as we, you know, we have had a charrette on, on Weetog and Weetog extends, we're talking from Powder Forest all the way down to the, to the southern edge of town and that's all of Weetog. So when you look at the whole thing, we're talking about, and then they've actually recommended that we develop the east side of Route ten. So from that perspective, it does make sense, you know, when this was first talked about, I said, you know, it probably should be all the way from up Middle Street up to the Winslow Place because there is a lot of business in Weetog. So I don't see it just as an extension of B1 for Abigail's. Really, because really those three properties are in the middle of these zones. It's kind of awkward to have the three residential properties not be business properties. And I don't think the floodplain issue, I don't think is relative to the zone change because anything regarding the zone, the floodplain would be addressed in any kind of site plan for whatever development goes in there. So it's not, the B zone, B1 zone won't impact the floodplain any differently than a residential zone as far as regulations. So from that standpoint, oh, and the capacity in the parking, I didn't see that as, as an issue either that was raised. You know, by Abigail's as to whether we're, we don't, you can't have an approval for a site plan approval for a use that requires the use of another property, at least other than in the town center zone. So I didn't see that as a, as a relevant argument. That was all I had to say.
Okay.
Let me just, I got two, I have to just interrupt another moment here that I want to make sure that all of our, our commission members realize we have no obligation to accept the P O C D. The planning commission wrote it. It's been endorsed, that's it, but we don't have an obligation in our decision-making to make that the direction that we take. We take that as advisory, like they take, you know, information and positioning with us, it's advisory. They don't tell us what to do. We need to make our own decisions. And if there's language and provisions in the P O C D that you're not comfortable with or don't agree with, that's fine, that's part of why you're here. We need a mix of insights and thoughts and values in our decision-making. So you can't just pull out the P O C D and say, you know, you're, you've got it. But I, I appreciate Kevin's thorough awareness of what's in that P O C D.
Dave?
No, sorry. I'm not seated. Mike, anything? Anne?
I, I just see this as a very complicated issue. I think there's definitely many, many sides to it and many, many things to consider. I see Weetog a, as potential for commercial. On the other hand, I fully have been a part of the traffic jam at one eighty-five many times for about ten years, as a matter of fact, both coming and going, and it's, it's a nightmare. To add to that, I think would be a detriment to the citizens of Simsbury. I also think that the people with the property that's abutted have some very, very valid points. Their property is worth money, it's also worth a lot in history. And I think that's something that we have to respect. I guess the other thing that concerns me, which really shouldn't, doesn't really factor into this at all. And I know that the developer had no obligation to notify or discuss this with the neighbors ahead of time. However, that does speak to me of their inattentiveness or their lack of concern for the abutting neighbors. And I question in the future where their minds and hearts might be. And it probably, it seems to me that it would not be to the benefit of the abutting neighbors.
Okay.
But I realize that's probably not something that to be considered, but it's something that I'm thinking about.
Yeah. So we have no commitment on Mike or Donna's side? Any ideas?
Mr. Chairman, you're asking me where my position on this is? I, you know, I have some very serious concerns about the safety of the daycare facility that's currently abutting this property. I too share many of the concerns about the traffic and the abutting property owners. I'm concerned for their, the value of their properties. And I would be against this.
Okay. Donna? Have any comments?
Yeah, like I said, I, as much as I like the idea of a brewery in the barn and maintaining the property the way it looks now, it sounds nice, but I have major concerns about zoning that area B1 and what we're opening it up to in the future. Like I said, there's a whole list of things that could go into that area and I'm not comfortable with that list.
Okay.
And we'd be setting precedent for it to just move to every other property north.
Okay. My, my position on this is that there have been, there has been an application approved already for commercial use of that property for, as a movie studio. It was done in the late eighties. On the other side of Hopmatoos, on the other side of one eighty-five from the Chart House is a house on the corner where I used to live. And that house was approved for engineering offices in nineteen eighty-seven or eighty-eight. So the idea that there's commercial demand and value along that property along that strip is, I think is supported in, in the history. But my feeling is that looking at it as a zone change rather than a specific use variance is probably a little much, a little too, too big a move given that you could do lots of other things as of right there. And so I'm kind of siding with Bruce, Mike and Donna. And that's where I think I am on this. Are we ready to make a motion?
Well, I, I don't, I would give it a try, Dave. I'm not sure, you know, it's been our past practice to make an affirmative statement to the.
That's important.
Well, how about if we just keep it simple and I'll say that I move approval of the application twenty-one oh four as it's described in the agenda for the meeting?
To, to take effect May fourteenth.
Why does it have to wait for May fourteenth? I missed something.
Because there's a.
Oh, there's a notice period, okay, great, to take effect on it on May fourteenth.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I'm going to vote for it, yes.
Bruce? Are you in favor of the zone change?
No, I'm not. So, yeah, right, excuse me. I confused myself.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. Any others positive? We got Kevin is a yes. No?
No.
No. Mike?
No.
And me. Okay, the motion fails five to one. Thank you very much. Okay. Next order of business?
Thank you.
Is we have an application of Jeff Zat, he's probably still here somewhere. Do we have a motion for Jeff? Mike?
Yeah, you have a staff report.
Yep, I got it.
Dated the thirteenth from me. And, and it just was for the expansion of the premise, so I can work with Jeff about license type and get him, get him back before the commission in two weeks.
But as a public hearer, that's going to have to be a public hearing too, right?
No, if we, we have not done anything. We've said expand outer, outdoor patio with alcohol service.
No, I mean, the upgrade of the license, I thought that had to be a public hearing. No?
That's what he's asking.
You're shaking your head like, oh, this was it?
Yes, we can say, we can approve.
Oh, okay, okay.
We can approve the upgrade of his license within our public hearing notice the way it's written.
We can, okay, we can take the notice we've already given as satisfactory. Is that what you're saying, Dave? The notice we've already given is satisfactory?
It's for alcohol service. It doesn't, our notice doesn't specify the license type. So we can make a motion to approve his outdoor service with full alcohol service. And that would cover him for the, for the change in his application to the liquor authority.
And then he would just have to get with Mike and submit the necessary license application.
Right.
Okay.
We're giving him permission to serve full alcohol.
Fine with me. I think it's a great move for him.
It saves.
I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, we could make him go through the dance of another three weeks and I don't think we'd want to do that. So now, somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. Motion to approve application twenty-one oh five of G H S P LLC owner, Jeff Lizotte applicant for a special exception pursuant to section five point five and six point three of the zoning regulations to expand outdoor patio with full alcohol service of the property located at two Tungus Road KO four, two oh six dash zero zero one zone. I one F P special exception approval is subject to the following conditions. Approval is for the expansion of the premises. Any change to that? No. Never mind.
Let's leave that out.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, none. Staining, okay, it carries six, nothing. Thank you very much. Okay, next order of business is. Okay, next order of business is Mr. Richmond's application for a for a storage facility.
So, Mr. Chairman, we, we received the application for the, the new self-storage, but however, we are missing some information. Dave's engineer gave us the revised data on, late last week. Jeff Shay has not had time to complete his review, just says, got it on Friday. So we're just ask that you table this application to your next meeting.
Okay. Can I have a motion to table the application?
Go on.
Mike?
Second.
Second by Anne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Carries six, nothing. No abstentions. Okay, the next order of business is the Simsbury 1820 House and the site plan amendment to adjust his patio service area. Chris, you want to explain to us what you want to do?
Sure, Dave. Actually, just really, it couldn't be any more simple than what I've already submitted. What we're gonna do is, there are currently two flower beds that are on either side of the east side of the building, adjacent to the sidewalk that runs down to the library that we are proposing to remove and to add in pavers. So remove the flower beds, go in with pavers and then also put in permanent planters with landscaping that is historically accurate with the property. Much like the boxwoods that are currently, you know, surrounding the patio adjacent to the portico. And all the information that was submitted in our plan. You know, I think that it probably, you know, provide us with an additional 10 tables and then post-COVID, that could be, you know, a opportunity for us to have the, the outdoor dining that we would require in order to make our facility more viable. You know, during COVID, you know, obviously more outdoor dining, outdoor dining is better. And, you know, we're willing to make the investment into beautifying the space, so that's what we're looking for.
Thank you. Mike has done a recommendation analyzing it. Commissioners have any questions of, Chris, what are, how it's gonna work and so forth?
Just a quick point, is any, are any of those new tables protected from the weather? Or they're just, you know, not gonna be occupied when it's raining, kind of?
Yeah, so the only protected areas that we currently offer is on the covered porch.
Okay.
We're not planning on extending awnings over that or anything of that nature. Just because of the nature of the house, we don't want to disrupt the integrity of the historic building. You know, we think that the umbrellas offer a nice nice vehicle to advertise that we're open. Not, not necessarily, you know, advertisement per se, however, you know, functional as well as it can be. You know, nice, bright, you know, red umbrellas in front of a gray house. Says, yes, we're open for business and that's what we want to do.
You? Other questions?
Thank you.
Are we ready to make a motion on this application?
Yes.
Okay. Mike has got an app, Mike has got a recommended motion for us.
Yes. Somehow I didn't get it.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 2107 of Simsbury 1820 House LLC owner, Chris Riley applicant for a site plan amendment for the construction of a permanent patio area across the eastern and northern elevations of the existing building for the property located at 731 Middle Street. Site plan amendment approval is subject to the following conditions. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for the patio seating area. Two, the commission authorized the staff to approve administrative changes to grading and landscaping. Such changes are to be reviewed and approved by staff prior to implementation. Requests for modifications are to be made in writing.
Second that.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, abstaining. Carries six, nothing. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks, Dave. We appreciate it. Thanks.
Good luck.
All right, take care.
Okay, now we've got general commission business. Mike has uploaded a, a new memo with the industrial recommend, industrial use changes that we recommend and that we talked about last time. See if I can find it here. Nope. I lost. Has everybody looked at that? Has anybody?
I printed it, but I haven't looked at it yet.
I haven't looked at it.
Yeah, maybe Mike could just tell us which ones were changed.
Well, they're color coded.
It's color coded.
They were color coded before.
Yeah, so, so this is just based on our, our discussion at our last special meeting last Monday night. They, from the previous version that, that the commission saw at the meeting two weeks ago, some of the changes that were made, one had to do with, and I'll just scroll down here, on page two, you have less details on the breakdown of retail uses. There was a cap on a minimum size for what's approved by site plan versus what's, what's approved by a special exception. That's one change that some members may, may notice. The next is the, the next use indoor movie theaters or similar performing art facilities slash theaters approved by site plan. That, that's a use that a few commissioners would like to see. Commercial kennels, veterinary offices and hospitals would be approved by special exception. The last one, if this is a, as a result of our conversations, there was a discussion about, well, what do you do about existing buildings and maybe figuring out a way to encourage residential uses? I know that the commission asked me to look at it. I thought up an idea that converted, the conversion of, of buildings for residential uses provided the structure was built prior to January 1st, 2021 as, as an, it's just a concept as a placeholder there for, an avenue for residential uses. You know, because for example, let's say like you have like a, the Chubb Insurance Building or the former Simsbury Bank Building, that's now Liberty Bank down on the south end of town and, and you know, that, that large office building becomes vacant. You know, is there a way that you can promote adaptive reuse, potentially allowing a residential use in there? Not just commercial options that are there. So I, I put that in there as just a placeholder right now, just based on our conversation. The last thing on, on the, the memo, and I'll just, I'll turn it to the commission is we discussed that at the special meeting, the bulk requirements. And after, after our discussion, it kind of appeared that the bulk requirements are kind of reversed in our regs where it says right now, I1, you need 10 acres. I2, there's no minimum requirement, yet the I2 zoning district has more of the intense uses than the I1. The commission felt, the members present at the meeting said, you know, we'd like to see that, those two reversed. And, and so now your chart would read, and I apologize, the I1's on top, just, just to just signify the change. I1 now, excuse me, the minimum lot size will be 10 acres versus I1, and there will be no minimum size unless we want to get rid of that 10 acres standard. Your business zones, majority of the business zones do not have minimum lot size. But, so that's the, the substantive changes from our last, our last meeting and two weeks ago.
Well, I'm, I'm interested in what everybody thinks, but on the point you were trying to make about the placeholder relative to conversion of existing built space to residential. The concept I was just trying to throw up in the air, because I saw it for the, you know, in Avon and Farmington. I'm not sure that, how workable it is for us, but it basically would provide for residential on, on an upper floor, upper floors. And so some sort of business activity continues in their, in their provisions. There's business activity on the lower floor or floors, residential above that.
The problem with that, Bruce, is that in those particular sites, the two sites that we're talking about, they're really rare lots. And you know, business on the first floor doesn't make a lot of sense there.
Well, unless you're an insurance company.
Well, if you're an insurance company, you move in and take it, it's
If you need that much space, I think the problem isn't the need for, you know, it's the size of those buildings. And historically, they lease them in giant pieces.
Yeah, I didn't see any, any, any need to have business on the first floor. If we're gonna
Yeah, I'm not saying in my mind, I have, it's a requirement. I'm just pointing out that my frame of reference was what I read an hour before our meeting. And that was a scenario where there was, you know, both business activity and residential in the same building.
Yeah, these are just, I mean, you, you know, the buildings we're talking about are the, where Simsbury Bank was. I think that's totally empty now.
I, I went by there after our meeting and it's, Chubb was in the, Chubb's name is on the front of the one.
In the front.
Then there's another entrance to the east that, and on the rear, the parking places have the sign Evolution. I don't, I looked up what kind of a business evolution is. I think it's a software company in the healthcare related field, but I saw very few lights on in that building. And when you look at all the parking that's there, it's mostly empty. Chubb, in the space that I would have thought was Chubb, there's no lights on at all. And it was really the small, what is the smaller space that is in, I forget which is the original Hartford Special Machine. They, they, there was a big addition and a remodel, but Hartford Special Machine Company and the ghosts of the people who were there, it's, it's one of those two. It's like the two halves, it was a two-story building and now it's, you know.
Closer to the road.
Four stories, yeah.
I thought Hartford Special Machine was closer to the road than those.
No, no, it was one of those. The front or the back was Hartford Special Machine.
You can see it from that memo.
Oh, yeah, but the trees have gotten so much bigger in the years since, you know, along the railroad tracks.
Okay.
The former railroad tracks, now rails to trails.
Yeah. So what do we think about this set of things? Is this something we need to move forward with? Should we move forward with it? When everybody yell at once?
I thought someone was gonna speak. Yeah, I would move forward with it. The reason you did the conversion, the date on the conversion is so that no one builds a building now with the intent to convert it?
Exactly. So they gotta be standing right now, those buildings.
And then I would spell veterinary office correctly.
And that would make it animal hospital too.
Okay.
There's more letters than veterinary.
Vet-er and-ary, yeah. I'd just like to give Mike a hard time.
Yeah. I, I don't know if there's any way to get somebody who works in this field to brainstorm this a little bit or just take a look at it. Like some people in the real estate business, and I know, you know, there's a couple of local real estate folks that seem to find their way to our door or often than others. And my thought was just, this isn't, we're not committed to a one-time thing here, but our, our intention was to try to identify some things that we could do that might help encourage, you know, people to take advantage of the increasingly available space in Simsbury. And I don't know if there's anything we missed. We don't know what we don't know. I'm not sure what they hear from potential, you know, businesses that might be looking for space, but they could always come back. I mean, we always have the door open, right, Mike? They could come in with anything, whether it makes sense or not, but, you know. We've tried to accommodate where we could, but the idea was to maybe jumpstart something here, I think, in terms of, at least that's what I had in my mind. If we could, you know, find the key. Maybe the effort is part of it, but
Well, the next step would be to send this to public hearing where we could get more input. It would be good if EDC would weigh in.
Right.
You know, and people like Rich Korea, even David Richmond, I see Dave's on the call.
Yeah.
You know, some of those guys would, would weigh in on.
Why don't we, why don't we send it to the EDC and ask them for comments?
Right.
Good.
That seems like a good prudent next step.
One of the EDC things we're looking at is incubator space to
Oh, yeah.
For getting some of these smaller businesses off the ground.
Yeah.
But that would all be allowed within the current regs.
That's correct.
It would just be a subdivision of a, of the, the big, the bigger building.
So, would, do you agree with that? We should send it to EDC and have them ask them
I think that's a fine idea and and if there's I don't know if it's too, too large a group, but the chamber itself. Maybe there's
Yeah, the EDC is, is a government group that's got a job to
Yeah.
to help with this.
Well, maybe see, see if we can get some feedback from them and then decide what next.
Yeah, we could then go to public hearing or not.
Right.
Bruce, your idea of commercial lower space, residential upper space is, I've seen quite a bit of that elsewhere in the state. And I think it's a way to start absorbing some of this space that it's just commercial now and you can't, there isn't enough commercial or office users to take advantage of that. Maybe those two buildings you're talking about aren't in the right place. But having that as an option, I don't know what the zonings ordinances allow as far as a mixed-use kind of building. But I, I see that across the state is being, those types of units are being built more often.
And the and the two uses are something business-related and something residential run?
Yeah, you might have apartments on the top floor and downstairs, some kind of commercial use, retail or, you know, small office use.
Yeah.
Doesn't, manufacturing doesn't go well, I don't think, with a residential space, but
Well, they would have to be some sort of, I mean, you have to be concerned about the, the safety of the residents and and they would have a certain self-interest if, you know, they're not, not gonna want to live upstairs from an explosives factory, but you know, there are certain types of light duty sort of manufacturing that might not be prohibited.
That use was proposed in the charrette that was done for the, you know, center of town.
Yeah, it's in the center code, yeah. And principally, it's, it's already there in the center code. Upstairs and down, and the buildings are, you know, described in the illustrations. But the thought was, you know, existing structures, what can we do
Right.
to encourage? Okay.
Okay, let's send it to EDC, ask them for a response. And then we'll decide whether or not we want to go to public hearing with the changes. And that'll do it.
Yeah, that conversion, do we want to, do we need to even put in, you know, for partial or full residential use? Or do we even need to clarify that? Because it could be all residential, do we, does it have to have an industrial use?
Well, that's open, I think. Let's get the comments from EDC and, and think about it ourselves. We're, we're kind of moving inching toward this thing. And as, as Bruce said, we don't have a crying need to move today. We just need to be moving forward, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I just, I suspect nobody's holding their breath for action on this, but the work group work group that is, uh, really the board of selectmen's responsibility, the work group looking at short-term rentals has resumed. But we had a meeting last week and we have another one on this coming Monday, so I don't know where the end is, but at least it's back in, in motion. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any other motion to adjourn?
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, one real quick thing, and I'm never big in making anything in front of that motion. Um, did we, did we skip the minutes?
We don't have the minutes yet.
Okay.
Yeah. I apologize. I, I forgot to upload the minutes to your packet. Uh, that's on me. Unfortunately, I'm down two bodies right now.
Understood, Mike. I know you're busy and, and that was not a dig, that was just, uh, I couldn't find them, so I was just going to abstain. And then I went back and looked at the, the, the agenda and it was on there and, and we, we went over it. So I just was making sure we covered everything, even though it would have been out of order.
Right, thank you.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Carry six, nothing. Nobody abstained. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay.